To the ACE Committee. We're playing musical microphones here. Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I'm councillor Gavin, vice-chair of the Adult Social Care, Children's Services and Education Committee. As councillor Mupurfu Coles has provided her apologies, I will be chairing this meeting this evening. We'll be using the equipment connecting the chamber into a Microsoft Teams meeting, and some of the officers involved this evening will be joining us remotely via Teams. I need to inform everyone present that this meeting will be recorded and broadcast live on the internet through Teams, and a recording of this meeting will then be uploaded and available for repeat viewing on the councillor website. Also point out that councillor Ennis is joining us remotely as he has tested positive for Covid. Thank you councillor Ennis. And councillor Saltern is also joining us remotely. Thank you. Before we start the meeting, I'm just going to hand over to councillor McEwen who'd like to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'm sure colleagues are aware of the sad news that Ruth Perry recently passed away. Ruth was head teacher at Caversham Primary for 12 years, and prior to that Ruth was a deputy head. Ruth was highly respected by her colleagues and parents and members of the local community. She was an integral part of the community in Caversham and will be sorely missed. Now councillor Davies would also like to speak. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, I knew Ruth as a parent of two children, as both deputy head and head of Caversham Primary. Two of my children went through that school, and I can attest to the fact that she was every dealing I had with her was as she appeared to be a fantastic head, she was well loved by the children who've been, my children have been very shocked to hear what's happened. And as far as the impact to the wider community, as a councillor, I also had that relationship. And again, I think that every interaction I had, every action, interaction I had with Ruth has been one of where she was helpful, good leader, and will be a massive hole in the education community and in the community in general in Caversham. And we're all desperately sad and shocked, and I just want to pay tribute to and mark the fact of how desperately sad we are.
Thank you councillor Davies. Councillor Borsdon.
Thank you Chair. Like councillor Davies, my children knew, and so did I, that Ruth taught my daughter, and it's just hit our community in Caversham so hard. Lots of residents have been talking to me, just devastated by the appalling news. Want to send love and support to her family, and it's amazing how well the school is coping. It's just such a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Borsdon. Okay, we'll now move to the agenda. Do we have any declarations of interest? No, good. Can we take the minutes of the last meeting? Can we agree there are correct records? Agreed. Are there any matters arising from the minutes? No, thank you. Can we also receive the minutes of the Health and Wellbeing Board on the 7th of October and note those? Okay. I understand we have no petitions, there are no questions from the members of the public or councillors, and there are no decision book references. So we move to the substantive part of the agenda. So number seven is an NHS update on the emergency care, and we are being joined remotely by Sarah Webster. Welcome Sarah, who's going to give us an update. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you very much Chair, and I'd like to start by offering my condolences to Ruth's friends and family and those affected by that as well. Thank you. So to introduce myself, I'm Sarah Webster, I'm the executive director for Berkshire West on behalf of the Integrated Care Board. And I thought it would be helpful, given where we are in the year and the significant media attention on the current state in the NHS and wider social care arena, to give a bit of an update on what that means for us locally. I do have a presentation to go through with some information and some data to help give me some further information on that. But as a summary in advance, it's been clear through the media attention that the NHS has been experiencing the busiest winter on record, and that's been in the headlines repeatedly. You won't fail to have missed that. Locally, as a system across Berkshire West, Oxfordshire and Buckinghamshire, we have been feeling similar pressures, which culminated over Christmas and has escalated to our sort of level four kind of operating pressure escalation level for the first time, when things were being felt pretty acutely over the New Year weekend, and thankfully we were able to step down to level three last week, as things are improving going forwards into the new financial year. So I thought it'd be helpful to provide some local context. I'm going to talk through a number of slides and then be able to open up if there's any questions that I can either answer now or take away for some, take away to be able to provide any more information afterwards. So I just hope the technology works with me. Please could you let me know if the slideshow is not showing?
It's showing.
Excellent, thank you very much. So to kind of talk through the sort of urgent and emergency care pathways, we'll start with primary care. So our local GPs have been seeing increasing demand over the last few years, and unfortunately this graph doesn't show kind of December, January, we're still waiting on that updated data, because we did see a real increase in demand for appointments in December, particularly for children, noting the concerns around strep A and general RSV flu pressures, we saw a real pressure point on paediatric appointments. And that was coming through throughout December and into early January, and thankfully is starting to reduce again now to a slightly more normal seasonal level of activity, which is still highly pressured. We were able to provide additional funding for practices to increase workforce capacity within primary care, to be able to provide additional appointments. At the moment, that's running to the end of February, and we've also commissioned some additional respiratory clinics to specifically focus on the chest infections, the respiratory illnesses that we're seeing coming through at the moment, providing a significant number of additional appointments per week across the Berkshire West patch, which covers Reading, Wokingham and West Berkshire. And a last ACE committee that I attended, we also spoke about some of the broader access improvements work that's ongoing to help improve access to primary care, and so that's all continuing as well. I won't dwell on that, but it's actions around upgrading the telephony to improve access for booking appointments, making sure that we're using digital solutions where possible without excluding those who don't find it easy to use digital ways of working, and really focusing on communicating with our public around appropriate use of services, and the fact that there are a range of clinicians that you may be able to see if you need to see someone on the day that are very appropriate, including our highly trained pharmacists. So 111 has also been seeing a significant increase in number of phone calls. At times over winter, it was two or three times the normal daily rate of phone calls that we would expect into 111, and this is resulting in more transfers of patients into primary care, which is adding, which was adding into the additional activity that we were seeing in primary care. We are working on a clinical assessment service to support the 111 service as well, so sort of an enhanced clinical triage that in other areas of the country we've seen really helped to manage the amount of demand that then passes through into primary care, and that is due to go live over the next few weeks in Berkshire West. Just need to confirm the specific timeframe there, which I can come back to you on, which will hopefully help with 111 demand, but we are starting to see that level off slightly now, coming out of the real peak over Christmas and New Year, although with, as you can tell acutely based on the temperature, we're not out of winter yet, so we are continuing to manage this. In the primary care space as well, we've got the Urgent Care Centre that opened on the 5th of December, that we updated ACE Committee on previously. Just to remind members, that was, the service is based out of the Broad Street Mall in the centre of Reading, it's open 8am till 8pm, seven days a week, and it's a GP-led service, but we've got a multidisciplinary health team working within the centre, so paramedics, nursing specialists, and patients are appropriately triaged depending on the symptoms that they're presenting with. We've got capacity to see up to 100 patients a day, which we are allocating some to our emergency department at the Royal Berkshire, so if appropriate patients arrive at the emergency department, they can be transferred and given an appointment slip with a specific time that they can then go to the Urgent Care Centre instead, rather than waiting in the emergency department. Similarly, primary care colleagues in GP practices can allocate patients to appointments in this service if their on-the-day demand is fully utilised, and up to 50 patients can walk in, self-present. We are at the moment, so the service is launched and it's running well, but we're not actually using the full capacity, and some of that is due to the timing of the appointment, some of it is due to the fact it's a new service and it's bedding in. So we are, and it's still quite early days, it only opened on the 5th of December, so we're monitoring that closely and looking to see how, if this trend continues, we can make sure that those appointments are fully utilised, for example allowing 111 to access those appointments and refer in as well. So there's been a lot of attention on ambulance availability and response times and conveyance as well. We locally have had our difficulties with ambulance handover delays, where we have seen an increase in those days where unfortunately ambulances have been waiting over 30 minutes or over 60 minutes, which as you will be familiar with, holds up the emergency pathway and it makes it, takes longer for those ambulances then to be released to respond to calls. So an awful lot of work has gone into minimising those as quickly as possible. So the Royal Barks Hospital created a flexible offloading bay with an emergency department and flexible staff to minimise the amount of time we were asking ambulance services to wait in the department, and that's had a really positive effect. And this week our ambulance handover delays have significantly reduced, which is excellent, and we really, really want to maintain that. So an awful lot of work ongoing in that area, but it's not something that we were able to avoid over Christmas in terms of feeling that pressure that was a national pressure on our ambulance services. Attendances of the emergency departments at the Royal Berkshire Hospital have increased. They've been, as you can see on the graph, higher this winter than in the previous few winters. Interestingly, the number of patients who are then admitted into hospital, or the percentage of those, is reducing. So some of that is because we're seeing more minor illnesses and minor injuries presenting into the emergency department, and some of this is due to some really good new pathways that we are, that have been implemented across Berkshire West around same-day emergency care. So how can we do things rapidly that rapidly addresses the issue there so that the person can go home without needing to be admitted into hospital? So we're continuing to roll out as many of those services as possible and do all we can to minimise the number of people being admitted into hospital, and that's a huge partnership effort as well, working with colleagues across the community services and social care as well. So really, really good examples of partnership working. And discharge and onward care, so again, talking of partnership working, this is an area that we've got some fantastic relationships across the whole of the Berkshire West patch, including here in Reading, working really closely with Melissa and colleagues from the Reading Social Care Department around how do we make sure people don't stay in hospital for longer than they need to once they're ready to leave? So we are seeing an increase in the length of time that some of our residents are waiting in hospital, a lot of that is linked to a real increase in the complexity of patients' care needs at the moment coming out of hospital, and linked to the availability of that care in the community, which Melissa is obviously very, very familiar with, and working incredibly hard to make sure we can address that. So an awful lot of work's ongoing in that area. We had some additional funding through from the National 500 million Adult Social Care Discharge Fund in Reading, it was just under 1.3 million that we were able to put into the Better Care Fund to invest in services to help enhance the provision we've got to help patients leave hospital as quickly as possible. Some of that's care in their own home, some of it is step-down care in care homes, and some of it ranges to really, really complex care packages for those with incredibly high need that we need to support to live as full a life as possible outside of hospital. So that was, I'll stop sharing my screen now, that was a kind of a whistle-stop tour of the data throughout winter, and some of the things that we're working really hard on to address and make sure that we're providing the best service that we possibly can do for our residents. We are already having conversations about what can we come together to do differently and plan as proactively as possible before next winter, so we can bring back another update to you very soon on that as well, if that would be helpful. Melissa and I can probably do a joint update on that actually next time, but I'll pause there and take any questions from members, and thank you for your time.
Thank you Sarah, for your report. Can I ask you to send the presentation to committee services so that we can include it in the minutes, please? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Can I?
Thank you Chair. Thank you Sarah for that really in-depth presentation, it's really helpful to get a nerve of view. And obviously, you know, somebody just needs to put the news on at the moment and see the difficulties the NHS is facing with, you know, waits for appointments, and obviously we all want, you know, properly funded NHS and want our family members to be seen promptly. And I do appreciate the work that has gone in in terms of improving communication and 111 service. It's really positive about the urgent care service, and obviously we want our residents to use that service. I do worry that people are, you mentioned as well that people are going to ANE, and quite often it's because people can't get GP appointments and they're kind of escalating and waiting, and then they become quite unwell and going to ANE. So, you know, we all want more funding for the NHS, but this, on a positive note, the urgent care service is in Reading, it's for our residents, and we obviously need to encourage as many residents as possible to use it. So thank you very much for the update, and I look forward to further updates in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I see your mic isn't working.
Thank you, let's try, oh there we go, even I can hear myself now. Sorry, this might be a question more for Melissa around safely discharging people home from hospital. Do we have an idea of how many people are waiting, or Reading residents who are waiting to be discharged, waiting for social care packages?
Do we want to see if there are a number of questions, and then we can come back to them all at the same time?
Can I therefore ask just a?
Councillor Keane?
Problems with the? Thank you. Yeah, and are the re-ablement team currently able to offer support with getting people home from hospital, particularly are they able to provide care packages for people at the moment? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McConnell?
Mine's just a very short question, more for if my residents ask me. If we're not at full capacity, what would be the waiting time on average if somebody walks in there? Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or comments? So if we, oh councillor Ennis?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's really, thank you Sarah, it's really helpful to have that to come at short notice, because I know we asked you to come at quite short notice, because I think it's important that the ACE Committee hears what's going on. As councillor McKeon has said, that, you know, there's not a day goes by when we're hearing the situation, and that, I will make a political point, I'm sorry, I'm a politician, so, you know, there's a lot of these measures that are reactive, I'm not talking to the Better Care Fund and that, and we need to be proactive, and I'll come on to that, but what we do need is a government who cares about the NHS, who cares about the NHS staff, who understands resourcing and understands the importance of an NHS right at the point of access and fully funded. We need the government that cares. This one doesn't, it doesn't care, in fact they don't even use it, to be frank, so why would they care? I'm not expecting you to comment on this Sarah, but I think it's important to make these points, because millions of people up and down the country are making these points when they're waiting for operations that, you know, are delayed. We need a fully funded NHS and a government who cares, and hopefully we'll get that soon enough. I really welcome the question about discharges and the joint work, I think it's crucial about joint working, and, you know, for the question that's been raised about what's going on in discharges, is that adult social care, despite the pressures, the massive pressures that are faced by the NHS and faced by adult social care, are working well as possible. That's the word we have to say, with discharges, and there is some good partnership working going on, because ultimately, the pressure, often the pressure is people that are stuck in hospital and haven't got the full packages available. We need an adult social care service, we were promised it. It was oven-ready by Mr Johnson, and it's been kicked into the long grass. We need a really good joint working adult social care and NHS for discharges, but I welcome the money, even though it is reactive, you know, from the Better Care Fund to try and work there. And I know Melissa has reported to us as councillors and myself, as lead councillor for adult social care, that there is some really good work going on. Innovation is taking place in Reading with the NHS into making sure people are supported, and I very much welcome that. Thank you, and thank you for the update as well at short notice.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Councillor Borsdon?
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to give some anecdotal feedback, and that is from a former Conservative councillor who has been, as he's put it recently, a mystery shopper at the Royal Barks. He's been admitted not out of choice on a couple of occasions recently. In an ambulance, minor injuries, resuscitation, majors, x-ray and acute medical unit. He's commented, and if you wouldn't mind me reading just a very short thing, "The staff are incredible, they generally have a good sense of humour, and are great at answering my many questions. They're clearly busy, but certainly this hospital is not overwhelmed, and they are managing a high level of care with good spirits to those who need it. Hard to tell exactly how quick the ambulance arrived, but it appears to be less than 10 minutes. He was taken seriously unwell, and someone who was with him called for an ambulance, and that's a very good result." I acknowledge that from press reports, ambulances aren't always getting to people as quickly, but when it matters for urgent cases like this one, I'm pleased to report good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Borsdon, it is always good to hear the good news as well. Councillor Hoskin?
Thank you Chairman, I think, you know, it is always good to hear when people have good service, and I think we can all agree that the staff in the NHS are doing their, you know, working their socks off in order to try to keep the service going. But as an appointed public governor of the ambulance trust, I think it is worth reminding everyone that ambulance trusts both in Ireland and across the country are in crisis, and they, only a week or so ago, they called a critical incident because they were unable to provide an adequate service, and that was the ambulance trust declaring that, as ambulance trusts have across the entire country. So it's great when, you know, often people get a good service, but we must remember the NHS is in... ...service they provide, and increasingly the evidence is that the higher levels of excess deaths that are occurring at the moment are partly as a result of problems within the NHS. You know, we cannot deny the issues that exist, and we, you know, will do our best locally to do what we can to hold things together, but we need change, we need to just change rapidly in order to save the NHS.
Thank you councillor Hoskin. Okay, I think we have some questions for officers, so shall we go to Sarah first to answer the question, and then we'll come to Melissa? Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of some of those specific questions, so the ones I picked up around urgent care centre, waiting times if our residents want to use that service, so that will vary depending on the time of day and how many appointments have been booked in that day. So you'll either get appointments there and then, within the next half an hour, or if it's a slightly longer time, you'll be given an appointment time and told that you're able to leave, go back home, wait and then come back in again. I'll caveat that to say that there is a clinical triage, so if someone appears more urgent and they kind of red flag, then they'll be slotted in sooner and seen immediately if needs be, and similarly if they're felt that actually they are so acute they need to be seen by the emergency department, then ambulances can be called and arrangements can be made to transfer them to the most appropriate service. So there, you may also be, if it's towards the end of the day, so open 8am till 8pm, you may be given an appointment for the following morning, again, if that is clinically appropriate. So it's a flexible service, it's not a kind of turn up and wait as you may have to do at ANE, with the aim being to hopefully make better use of everybody's time. I hope that answered that question. I picked up another question on the proactive planning. So at the moment, our organisations are working through our financial allocations for next year and what that means for our budgets, and then we're absolutely, there's a commitment locally across our NHS and local authority organisations to come together to say what do we need to do proactively for next year to make sure we've got all the services in place to have the best outcome we can within our means for our residents going forwards. So I can't necessarily say exactly what that looks like right now, but I can say that there is a commitment for all of us to do that, and Melissa and I and colleagues were just having a conversation earlier today along those lines as well. So that's something we can come back and update you on, but absolutely the commitment is there to do as much as we can within the financial parameters that we're working within. And I want to acknowledge the positive feedback, thank you very much. I think it is really important to acknowledge the extreme efforts our staff are going to to keep services running, the dedication and the commitment of everyone in NHS and all of our colleagues working across the social care and arenas and within our care providers really are going the extra mile and then some at the moment, so it's really important to acknowledge that, and thank you for the positive feedback.
Thank you Sarah. Shall I take this one?
Thank you. Thank you Chair. So yes, just to start really, Sarah, thank you very much for the update, the real open and transparent update, and really helpful to, I think, to see the context, so that, you know, the previous winters, and that's quite stark really, isn't it, albeit it is being rehearsed nationally. Just to say also, I'm really valuing the partnership working and that real focus on our local residents, which is paramount, and your role in particular Sarah, championing Berkshire West and Reading, is, I think, been really pivotal in the last few weeks, so thank you. Also echoing your point about staff have been absolutely going the extra mile across the system to do their utmost for our residents, and it's been really difficult at times, and I think we'd all acknowledge that. And then finally, yes, the point that we are mobilising at short notice one-off monies, and that's... And that can be tricky. But as councillor Ennis says, we are trying to be creative and innovative. But all of us want to have a more sustainable plan for next winter because it does feel like we are repeating the same conversations at last minute. Regarding councillor Keane's question, so to give you a flavour of the numbers, we've currently got about 20 people waiting. And that's quite typical. That's across the different pathways. So people that are either able to go home but are waiting care or going into care homes. The challenge on the care home pathway, which is known as pathway three, is the sheer complexity of some of the people that need to go home. So it's not easy to find them places. And that unfortunately does cause delays while we negotiate the right place for the person for them to stay. Something that is regrettable, but is the situation. Regarding your point about re-ablement, so it's been tricky for our re-ablement service to manage the demand. Again, that's linked to people often now needing, you know, four calls a day. It's that high end. So it's a lot of capacity at a short period of time. But to try and mitigate that, we have commissioned some additional re-ablement hours to support our re-ablement team. So that's in blocks of 200. So that's mobilised also alongside some of those acute beds in our care homes. So we're wrapping services around what we've got in place currently to try and manage this pressure. Hopefully, that has answered your question. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Sarah, again, for your presentation. I'm sure we will be returning to this topic throughout the next year. And I'm sure you will be invited back to give us further updates. So thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item, item eight, which is the school admissions policy, which I think is going to be introduced by Victoria Hannington. Hello, Victoria. Can you hear us?
Apologies, I can hear you. I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was me going to introduce it, but I can, I can introduce it. That's fine. So we've come here today, as normally we do every January, to ask for your approval, to seek your approval of the school admissions policies for the admissions for the community primary schools in Reading. Sorry, I just need to go to the bit that I'm actually asking. So we are asking that the schemes attached in annex A, B and C are the admissions arrangements for 24, 25 for the admissions for the community schools in Reading and the local arrangements that comply with the national coordinated primary admissions process. And that the scheme attached in annex D is the local arrangements for the complying with the national coordinated secondary admissions process for 24, 25. And annex E is the relevant area that we will always have to ask you to determine as well. And they need to be determined and published by the 28th of February.
Thank you. Councillor McKeon?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to Victoria for this report. And colleagues will be aware that we are responsible for publishing admission arrangements for our community maintained schools. And you'll also be aware that there are no reasons to the report, there are no substantive changes to the policy, apart from the slight changes in section nine, which is covering family disputes around admissions and children. I'm happy to approve this report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Criswell.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks to the report. It's, excuse me, it's a really good system that we've got. I've been through it twice, and I was very reassured both times by the communication from the council explaining how it worked to parents. I think it's a very good system. Just on the report, I found a few typos and things. So if I just, I think, and in particular, the maps of, the maps of primary school catchment areas are missing some catchment areas in some schools. And the height has moved from where marked and stuff. So it'd be worth going through and checking those. And on pages 47 and 48, there's a list of items and the text refers to item eight, but the list only goes up to item seven. And on page 49, in the last paragraph, there's a sentence that's, it says one than one, where it means more than one. So, and what else? Oh, yeah. And then, yeah, but the maps are the main thing, I think, because people will be looking at them and they're missing some areas and some schools and some label. But otherwise, the way it works, I think, is great.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to take a few questions and comments, and then we'll come back for comment. Councillor Cushing?
Hi. Yeah, councillor Criswell has made some of the points I wanted to make because I also noticed on the maps that in the North Reading area, the Heights School is included, although it's not a community school, and albeit in the wrong place. And it's quite helpful as a local councillor to see all the designated areas for the different schools. But on the following page in South Reading, there appears to be a large section that has no school. And I wondered whether some of the other non-community schools had been omitted from the maps, which would explain the areas that don't appear to have a school.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions or comments before we go back to officers? So Brian is going to answer that, I think.
Yeah, I'm first is to apologise to committee. So the wrong maps have been circulated to committee. We will amend that. Thank you for your diligence of reading such a long report. Clearly, we're trying to test your eye for detail. But we will, yeah, exactly. We can confirm that we've neither moved any school or disappeared any school or prior range Reading. So apologies for some of those issues about formatting that we've had. But we will circulate the appropriate maps. The key bit in terms of policy to ensure that you're able to proceed this evening is no changes to previously agreed schools are being requested. So you can with some confidence know that the schools will be where they were yesterday, tomorrow. So sincere apologies that there were those typos. And then thank, thank you councillors for your patience in that regard. I don't think we need to make any further comment, do we, Victoria?
Can I just add a comment? So I do really apologise about the Heights. I think they moved, I can't remember when they exactly moved, but the map, it was purely my fault. So that's wrong. And I'd only noticed it tonight, and I need to update it. So that is the North Primary map. In terms of the South Primary map, we only ever include the catchment areas of schools with catchment areas. That's why the Heights is in there. The area on the top of the South map, that is where, I want to say, God, really, I should have checked this.
New Christchurch?
I think it's, I think slightly above that is, I want to say, hang on, sorry. I believe, you never would have known, I've lived in Reading all my life, would you? Sorry.
I was going to say.
I think it's a Palmer. And basically, it's an academy school, and they do not have a catchment anymore. So that's why that there's a specific area above Whitley Park that doesn't have a catchment because there is no catchment school for that, for that area. We do have areas within Reading that do not have a catchment school. And this is where the school, the area, the school has converted from a community primary school to an academy.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we will be reissuing the maps for the committee to see if gain assurance is out of guard. And in terms of the typos, I'll just check in with councillors at the end of the meeting to make sure we've captured all the various bits of feedback. But thank you for that, for that feedback.
Councillor Criswell?
I'm sorry, one more thing. Did I gather from the colouring being probably track changes that the, the, there were sections for disputes between parents and how they were going to be handled? I'd just like to say that that was very well written and very well handled. It's a shame that it needs to be there, but it's good that it is.
Thank you, councillor. So that is the one meaningful change that we've made for this year to make sure that we're really clear. It clarifies policy, it doesn't amend current policy, but it just tries to create a clearer position. You're right, we tried to highlight that text so it could be drawn easily to the eye. So that's the one area where there will be a clarification of policy as opposed to change, as we proposed.
Thank you. So councillors, can we agree the recommended action in 2.1, 2.2 and 2.3? Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is the Autism Strategy and Action Plan. And I think Sunny is going to introduce this one.
Because the first test is the mic's working. So it's all good. Okay, thank you, councillor. Chair, so this has been to the ACE Committee a few times before as part of the consultation period. And I'm here to present the final draft version, which has been a year in the making. And I think it's at a stage where I think adult social care and colleagues in children's services and our partner agencies and voluntary sector are really pleased to have it in the current state. Okay, cool. Technical issue, I think that's. And I think, so this is our all age autism strategy. And I think it's really been a good partnership approach. And I thank Brian and his, his staff for input into this. We've had input from a whole range of partner agencies and the voluntary sector. And I think what this has allowed us to do is actually bring partners together who are doing pieces of work around autism together now. What we found as part of doing the strategies, actually, everyone was doing lots of really good work, but actually, it was quite desperate and doing it in its own little pocket. So what it's allowed people to do is us to get the board now working really well. And the Autism Board is now quite a leader, leader to make sure that this strategy works and is delivered. And the key around that is delivering the action plan beneath it. And that was, that was submitted as part of one of the appendices. The other key, the key for me is as well, is making sure the Autism Board, which is going to deliver this strategy, has teeth. And so it was agreed by the leader that the Autism Board would report into the Health and Wellbeing Board, and we would submit an annual report to the Health and Wellbeing Board on the progress of this strategy. So again, if, so this doesn't sit on the shelf and gather dust, that partner was, partner agencies were held to account on what they're doing around this, this area of work. So that's a real positive step forward. And I'm taking it to the Health and Wellbeing Board on Friday for their final sign off as well. So it just basically brings that governance together. So the Autism Board will meet every, every two months. And beneath that as well is one of the key actions that came out when we delivered this strategies is how do autistic adults actually, and children, feed into service delivery, not just of the council, but health and other sectors. And it was agreed that we felt that people wanted to be part of the work that was going forward. But actually, attending a board, which was quite strategic and actually didn't make the best use of their time, wasn't seemed to be the best for us. So as part of this work, we're also going to develop a reference group, which will sit aside the board, where all partner agencies will take work that they're going to do around this area to get people's input and then bring it to the board for final sign off. So that, that seems really positive. And I've got a meeting with voluntary agencies and other people who've come forward as part of this work that want to be part of that, that process. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we've got, I present this to the board, to the committee, sorry. And I'm happy that we've done this. It's taken a whole year, but I think it needed that time to make sure it was done properly. And yeah, I think I've met with most of people in this room, getting your feedback. So hopefully, I'm happy to take any answers that you might have moving forward.
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Ennis to comment?
Thanks, councillor Gavin. I just want to say before I go into the autism strategy, I want to leave my, say my tribute to Ruth Perry. I worked as Lead Councillor for Education a few years ago. I was a Lead Councillor for Education a number of years ago. I worked with Ruth as head, and she was an amazing head and a wonderful individual who was totally advocating for the children of Caversham and children generally. And really feel sad of her passing. A wonderful head teacher. I just wanted to say that. Thanks, Sunny, for your, for that. And also for your work in completing this strategy. This has been a while in the making. A lot of hard work has gone into the strategy. It's been through a number of committees and discussed with a lot of councillors and people in the voluntary sector. And lots of engagement, particularly, and this is the important element, of with autistic people, people with autism have engaged and families with the strategy. And what we would say is while there's still lots to do, this is not the end. This is not the panacea. Here's the strategy. This is it. This is a good starting point. And I really note, and, you know, we're welcome the comments Sunny made about the Autism Partnership Board, because I think that's where the work will be done to make sure, scrutinise the priorities, the seven priorities on three, two, three, you know, and to make sure that their progress is being made on this. And welcome it as well going into the Health and Wellbeing Board. I know it's there on Friday. I particularly, as adult social care lead, welcome the employment and the support. Because I heard figures at a meeting recently that only 22% of people with autism identified that they had autism on their job applications. And many autistic people are afraid or scared or fearful that if they identify they're autistic, they won't get work and they won't get a job. And I think that's something that's got to change. And we've got to reverse that so people can be, feel confident that they can identify as autistic and get as much opportunities as the rest of the population. And I, you know, welcome the action plan. And I take it the Autism Partnership Board and the ACE Committee as well, by the way. And the committees will scrutinise and audit the, the action plan for progress. Also, note on appendix three, the impact assessment, which I think is so important to make sure that this is successful. So really much support this and look forward to its implementation. It's great that the council's got an autism strategy at the moment. And look forward to the progress being made and the feedback from people with autism of how it's made a positive impact in their lives. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. Councillor Hoskin?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Chair. I mean, I just briefly wanted to just welcome this report. As John has just outlined, this has gone through a really long, but I think really effective process of engagement, involvement, co-production, drafts going backwards and forwards. Yes, councillors have been involved. But much more importantly, is that the range of community groups, advocacy groups and autistic people that have been involved. And I think that's, that's great. And it's real, you know, I think is a, how we need to be doing all our policy actually across the council, which has led us to what I think here's a really good document. I think John's outlined a few of the elements. But the bits that I'm really pleased that we're sort of starting to make, bring forward in a way that we haven't done before is the stuff around the economy, business and employment. I mean, I suppose if I would sum up what, you know, kind of where I'm hoping this starts to take us is that Reading will be the town where autistic people can flourish and truly reach their potential and lead the lives that they're capable of. But to do that, we as a town need to change. And so do employers, and so do people who provide services out there. And in fact, all of us. And I think this action plan, you know, provides a bit of a way that will take us further in that direction. So I really welcome that. I think the employment stuff, particularly actually, we just, you know, as a, as a town, one of our biggest challenges is our economy is being constricted by a labour shortage and skills shortage, not to be ensuring that, you know, all, all people in Reading can, you know, reach their full potential and contribute. What they, you know, their potential is madness. And therefore, that's really important. their, their potential is madness. And therefore that's really important. The other bit, there's some really good stuff here around some of the transitioning between, um, young people services and, and adult services. We need to get absolutely right, uh, for autistic people. And I think that's, that's great there. So yeah, really pleased with this. Uh, and as I think John said, I think, you know, us working through these actions and making sure they're delivered is, is absolutely critical. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Corl.
Thank you. Um, my comments echo and tie in with what councillor Ennis and Hoskins have already said. I think this is a really thorough piece of work. Um, it's very clear, um, what the issues, uh, sort of speaking specifically of what you've laid before us, uh, tonight. It's very clear what the issues raised were and, um, what action you took. I found it very easy to just look down and see the questions, see the response, see what you've done. It was so lovely and transparent. Um, and then, and I guess I'm just asking, because I'm hoping that all the contrib- contributors to the consultation felt heard. What has been the reaction, um, of, of the people, uh, contrib- contributors to the consultation? And are they feeling, um, heard? Cause I'm hoping they do.
Is there anybody else who wants to add anything at the moment or no? Sorry, I didn't see you.
Sorry, I've, I've got a couple of questions. I, I also would like to add that this is a really good piece of work, lots of positivity. I, I really like the way it's laid out into the priorities and who's leading on them, them ones. And I like to bring our attention to priority five, housing and supported independent living. As I, in my, in my day job, I'm a social prescriber and I come across a lot of people with autism, lots of adults who simply don't meet the criteria for adult social care. So they're not, their needs are not currently being met, uh, through adult social care. And they need support workers, they need, they need people just to help them run their day to day lives. So actually they can manage things like paying bills, getting their benefits sorted out. I mean, they can't even get to the point where they're thinking about work and filling in job applications because they're not ready for it yet. So they need to actually be stable. Um, so it's, is that piece of work going to be done by adult social care? It, are the, it doesn't look like there's going to be any extra resources put in. Um, but, um, is the criteria going to be changed to absorb those people in so they can have support? And I'm also aware that there is going to be a fund available to improve the front door of social services. And whether that money could be accessed to provide support workers who can support this, this cohort of, of people who desperately need that support just to, just to keep going and to get themselves, um, you know, get, get themselves underway really. There's also, I can't see anything in there about advocacy. And I'm wondering whether that might come under the auspices of, um, autism Berkshire. It's like, I believe they may be actually applying advertising for an advocate. But I wondered if, if there's any, if you could sort of talk about that, if, if, uh, you know, anything about that. And I also wonder if this is an all age strategy. We know that a lot of people are being diagnosed a bit later, later on in their thirties and forties. And potentially obviously there's going to be older people with autism. So whether there's going to be any work with groups like Age UK or, or any other groups who can actually support older people with autism as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Dennis.
Okay, um, I'd like to also echo, um, what councillor Ennis has said and councillor Hoskins, um, and others. On the report, it is a well-written report, much needed report. And I know that there's been a lot of effort and work put into this. Um, I have got one question and it's more about the engagement side. On page seventy six, seven point two, it did say that you, um, on the survey, you had a low engagement rate. And I just wanted to know, what will you be doing in the future to increase that engagement rate?
Thank you. So Sunny, are you going to?
Yep. Thank you for those questions. Uh, so I'll, I'll work through them as I, as I wrote them down. So as for, uh, the contributions to the, the strategy, definitely. So what we did was just, just before we got the final draft, uh, written, obviously I went back to all of the key stakeholders and those who did comment into it and just said, look, thank you for all your comments. These is now the final amended version, because what I didn't want to do was come to ACE and then to health and wellbeing board and say this is de facto. Now this is, so, uh, so the, the feedback has been quite positive. And I think, I think people are slightly, I think, uh, e- engagement fatigue. It's like now get on with it, just deliver it sort of thing and tweaking around with wording. So that, so, so, um, so that, that has been positive. And, and as for, uh, just, just the last question around the engagement of the last public consultation was low. I, I don't think that worried us too much because we got so many people engaged in the actual development of the strategy itself. So while the actual public consultation was a low turn up, we felt actually the people who had inputted into developing the strategy had been significant. I think we had over about 250 people who were part of that, you know, that co-production. So actually by the time we went back to this part of the con- public consultation, they'd said, well, this is what we, this is, this is what we put out there. So, so we weren't too concerned about that. I think what we will want to do, and this is part of the action plan, is, you know, we've got autism week coming up in March. What we want to do as a partnership board is really start to note autism in Reading and what does that mean? And to say, okay, these are the services available to them. So after this week, once I got it through the various committees, is start to work with our communications and with our partner agencies. How can we do a proper, uh, marketing campaign to promote, or, you know, what are the services out there for autistic residents in Reading? So, so that, that's our, that's our aim and start to have that snowball effect. As for, uh, it, we input around housing support. So I don't think we've got any aims to change our criteria in adult social care. But I think what, what we were able to do as part of this strategy, because it went, it went, had quite a lot of input internally within the council and colleagues from housing and, uh, econ- uh, in environment and economy regeneration were able to feed into this. So, so, uh, housing were able to say actually, you know, what, what, because we, um, the chief exec was very clear. Every single department needs to be feeding into this because it, this affects every single areas people's living. So, you know, how are our environment going to change our planning rules? How are they going to focus on, you know, making planners are looking at the needs of autistic adults? Uh, and also how is housing and other departments going to tweak their criteria to support that? So I think it's, as part of the action plan is for me to go to housing and say, okay, you know, as people come into your services or want to access housing support, what sort of, uh, uh, support will you be, uh, be able to offer that? I know we are, we, as part of our commissioning, I wasn't, uh, I didn't put it in the actual report, but we are looking at, um, different ways of commissioning. So, you know, we've got the, is it closing the gap or narrowing the gap? Or is we get, we're closing the gap? And that's looking at different areas of what we might want to do as, uh, for this, this group. But I think between us and, and the ICB, we are looking at different ways of how we s- support providers. So the ICB meeting, as you mentioned, have just commissioned, uh, autism Berkshire for supporting older adults, uh, and working ADAS jobs who, who, who are, that are waiting for an assessment or have just been assessed. So that's a new service that's just been, uh, put in just before Christmas. And obviously I'm, I'm, you know, I'm happy to get Jane to send, uh, more details because she's all over that, as you, as you probably expect. So, so yeah, so there, there's things happening, but I think what this strategy does allow us to do is as funding starts to come in, as we know, ad hoc monies do come, it gives us a hook to, to pin that funding on. Say actually we have a strategy, we know the gap is housing or employment and we want to focus on that. And, and I totally agree with councillor Hoskins around employment. And I think the key for me is how do we engage with local employers, uh, around this issue? Because we know that, um, when I was speaking to, uh, parents, uh, and often parents of older adults, not just youngsters. Actually they're saying, well, my son just wants a job that used to exist, like in a post room. Because that's what you can, you know, he's used to and that's what you can do, but they, those jobs don't exist anymore. So it's how we engage with our local employers. And again, uh, working with our colleagues in the other departments about how we, how we make that happen is key to this. So I don't have all the answers, but I think as a four-year strategy, our key is making sure we have an annual action plan that focuses on all of those elements.
Thank you. I think councillor Ennis wants to add a few words.
Exactly. If that's okay to come back on to councillor Keane, you raised that point before councillor Keane. So, and you got, I think, an answer. So if you want to write this down, it'd be good rather than presume that there's not, uh, extra funding. We're always looking for extra funding in Reading despite the massive pressures that we're under. The two, to two agendas of this strategy in my view is one, the respect agenda is to make sure that people with autism get respect and dignity, uh, and dealt with in the same way as everybody else is. And I think, I remember talking to, um, you know, um, families with children with special needs. It's the first thing is, is we want some respect. If we can get some respect, it's a good starting point. And I think this strategy really does prioritise respect. The second thing is there are a whole number of resources, a huge number of resources that are out there from the council, other organisations, from health. And it's the strategy, as, as Sunny said, it's drawing it together. It's drawing it together because a lot of the time, uh, and inspections have picked this up. There's a lot of good stuff going on, but how's it linking and how's it drawing? And the strategy will do that, but we are always looking to increase, uh, funding. So it's the draw of funding and as Sunny said, is to in- increase, you know, with more opportunities. And I think we've got a good chance because, you know, when you look bid for funding, the first thing is, is watch the strategy. And we've got one. So I'm, you know, please write that down councillor Keane. And, uh, I hope that's answered your questions because I know you've answered it before and we've had a discussion on it, that the funding will be drawn together and we will be looking to get more opportunities for funding. But it's the respect agenda as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. I think if we're all done on that, can I make a suggestion? Because I've heard it from various, um, speakers, is that we add a, a two point three to the recommended actions, that we have an annual report back to ACE about how we are achieving against the action plan and, uh, and the objectives on the action plan. Um, and then if we have that in the recommendations, then we could, then we can be assured that we will get an annual update. So with that, if, are we all agreed on that? Thank you. So with that, can I ask councillors if we accept the recommended actions in two point one, two point two and the new two point three, which Andrew is going to make up in, in a, in a proper sentence rather than my rather garbled one. Okay, are you all good with that? Excellent. Okay. So let's move on to the next item, which is a presentation from, uh, from Joe Lappin, who is joining us remotely, who is going to tell us about, um, the preparations that, uh, adult social care are making for inspection, I think, or at least for quality assurance.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you Chair and colleagues and councillors. Um, just by way of introduction, um, I'm Jo, Jo Lappin. Some of you I've met before through ACE. I'm the Assistant Director in Reading for safeguarding quality performance and practice. So I'm here to talk about and to give you an update really in relation to our preparations for CQC assurance. We're calling this striving for excellence because we believe this isn't really about being CQC ready. It's about providing a good quality service in essence, you know, across the board. And so adult social care differs from children's services in that we've not had any inspection regime for many, many years now. And very recently, the government have introduced, um, have, have introduced this new system, which will come into effect from April this year. So we're, we're busy preparing for that. We've done a lot of preparatory work in the last year. Um, and it's a bit of an evolving picture. So we're, we're finding new information, um, frequently from CQC and, and other bodies. I do have a presentation to share with you. So if it's okay, I'm going to share my screen now. Hopefully you can see that okay. So as I say, this is about us preparing for assurance, um, which will come into effect from April of this year. And just to give you a bit of context, so as I say, the local authorities' delivery of regulated functions hasn't previously, or hasn't for many, many years now, um, been part of an inspection regime. And it has been introduced through the Health and Care Act in 2022. Essentially what we will be inspected against is our care act responsibilities. As you know, this is a core piece of legislation that applies to adult social care. Um, and CQC have told us that they'll be looking at a range of methodology really. So they won't be just looking at inspection, they'll be looking at data and, um, all, all sorts of information really. So in terms of what assurance is, um, they'll be looking for evidence. So they'll look for evidence to determine how good we are at various, um, aspects of our services, how we identify and manage risks, how we deliver against our priorities. Um, and we understand so far, they will eventually publish ratings, but those ratings won't be, um, in effect in the, in the initial stages because they need to do some benchmarking. And that, as I say, they'll move away from just looking, just coming in to do a physical inspection. So they'll do some, lots of work around, um, data and, and information sources as well. So things like how we're doing against ombudsman, um, judgment, statutory returns, complaints, et cetera. Um, and then the four areas that CQC are going to, um, use to approach this, this new responsibility. How local authorities work with people. So how do we actually assess people's needs? How do we support them to live their lives independently? How do we provide our support to people? So how do we know what the market is? You know, what are the risks and challenges around the market? How do we actually commission the workforce, um, equitably? How do we work with our partners? How do we ensure safe systems? And so, you know, things like safeguarding, continuity of care, and then our leadership. And the leadership challenge goes beyond just the, obviously, the adult social care leadership. So they will be looking wider at the leadership and culture within the wider council. So in terms of our approach, as I say, we've been looking now for the last year or so, doing lots of planning, but it's an evolving picture. So we're getting information on a fairly frequently basis, from both CQC and the Lo- Local Government Association and ADAS, um, in terms of our readiness. In fact, only on Tuesday, CQC published, um, updates to their workbook. So we're sort of catching up, um, frequently. So we've done a previous self-assessment, but in December, we had new publication of a further self-assessment. So we're working currently to update that piece of work. Um, there's been two test sites, so very helpfully, two local authorities put themselves forward to be test sites for CQC. And so we're learning from those two individual test sites. There's also been lots of research, for example, by the King's Fund, um, who carried out research over the summer, which is really helpful to help us in terms of that national framework and the benchmarking. So we've met with both of those authorities to understand exactly, um, what the learning is from those test sites. So so far what we've done within DAX is we've secured project manager resource. Obviously this does need coordination, it needs facilitation, it needs some really clear sort of ownership and oversight. We've got some additional resources through our delivery fund, which has been really helpful. We've undertaken, as I say, that initial self-assessment and we're updating that based on the new framework that's come through. We're going to be commissioning an, an organisation to help us to have our policies and procedures all centralised and in one place. Um, and then we really need to ensure that we're engaging, obviously, and communicating with colleagues across the board. And we've been in tech, um, attending peer group sessions with Medway and Portsmouth, who are our comparator groups. Um, and then we've got, we've established a number of governance, which I would say are our sort of delivery channels really, to help us to deliver on the aspects of the, of the plan. I won't go through the detail of this. I'll allow you, obviously you can, um, have a look at this afterwards. And then what we're proposing is that we come back to ACE, because as I, as I say, it's an evolving picture. We come back to ACE probably May time, um, to help us to, um, to, to, you know, to give further information on the outcome of the self-assessment and the improvement journey.
Thank you. Thank you, Jo. Councillor Ennis.
Hello there. Thank, thanks for that. And before I start, I want to thank Jo, um, for all your And before I start, I want to thank Jo for all your work, Jo, as a safeguarding adults lead officer in Reading. Because I know you're moving on at the end of the week and best wishes to you. And that you, I think you've made a real difference and took a real focus to safeguarding whilst you've been here in Reading. So thank you for everything you've done. And welcome the striving for excellence presentation. This is not a game to tick boxes for an inspection. This is a process where we can improve services to the people of Reading. I mean, we know, we do moan, I'm a public servant, moan about inspections, but we can use inspections, make inspections as an opportunity to be scrutinised, to be audited, to see where we are, but also to improve our services to people. We must constantly strive to improve continuous improvement. And that's why this is a moving picture. Very much welcome it and very much welcome the open transparency nature that adult social care will bring, where we will use ACE, which is a public forum. The public might not be watching, they've got other things to watch or do, but they can link in and find out what's going on. Certainly, our local media colleagues will be in to see where we're at, what we're doing, what needs development, what needs further development, what needs improving, but also what we're doing well. And inspections do draw that out. So very much welcome that process, that ongoing process to be brought to ACE as well, Chair. So we can, all councillors can have a look and ask questions. My particular point will be on the auditing of cases because inspections do concentrate on case audits. I won't ask any questions as it's going on, but that'll be a very important part of the inspection, as well as our partnership working, the contracts, the commissioning process, and whether we get value for money. So really look forward to the work going on to ensure that we're providing a decent service to the people of Reading at the value for money that we've got given to us. So thanks, Jo. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Has anybody else got any? Councillor Dennis, sorry.
Hello. Thanks, Jo, for that presentation. It was really, a really good presentation and it's good to hear all the good things that you're doing, the collaborations, you know, with other areas and also looking at partner agencies such as Medway, looking at the pilots that are in place and the lessons that you're learning and you're picking those up as well. Because they are good things to, you know, bring into this. And also, what I also wanted to say was, you know, it's good that you're looking at the best practices and also employing a project manager and taking this really seriously by pulling the various areas together. Because, you know, it's really important to look at all aspects, which you are with policy and procedures, systems, processes, and also, you know, with the staff as well and training. So I welcome this and I look forward to the outcomes that are coming from this.
Thank you. Anybody else? So can we minute that we will have this report back to ACE in the next ACE? Is that May? Is it May? Or at the next ACE meeting? Thank you. So that takes us to the last item on the agenda, which I think again, Jo is going to present to us, which is the Berkshire West Safeguarding Adults Board, the annual report. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yes, this is me again. As I came to ACE previously with the contribution, the Reading contribution to the West Berkshire Safeguarding Adult Report. Sorry. So this is just really to acknowledge that the report has now been published and is available obviously for anyone who wishes to view that. And I just wanted to comment really on the priorities. So the Safeguarding Adults Board priorities are for this year are around self-neglect, the quality of the services and a review of our safeguarding adult review process. So this is about how we learn really from when things unfortunately have gone wrong or somebody has experienced harm. And then within Reading, we've got, as I've highlighted in the report, a number of areas that we're responding to those priorities. We have a delivery plan, which we go through with councillor Ennis in our regular meetings. But just rest assured really that we are working to the priorities of the Safeguarding Adults Board in terms of our internal delivery. Obviously safeguarding is a multi-agency responsibility, it's everybody's business. And we play our really key part in Reading towards the delivery of that plan.
Councillor Ennis.
Yeah, thank you. I must be frustrated in the meeting tonight. I thought I won't have a lot to say, but even though I'm not well, I'm still got my little... So I do apologise for if I've gone on a bit too much. Yeah, very much welcome this report. I mean, we know that adult safeguarding is a relatively new phenomenon, that we've been pretty well averse on child safeguarding and developed some real strategies and some real quite complex processes to protect children. But this is a relatively new phenomenon, given that people are living older now and are as much open to abuse as vulnerable, people, vulnerable sections of our community are open to abuse. So I sit on the Safeguarding Adults Board with the west of Berkshire. It's with West Berkshire, Wokenham and Reading. And this is the annual report. And I sit on there as a lead councillor and I welcome the four priorities. And to see the, you know, the trends and also to make sure that we're getting the right messages and information out to our community. Because what we need to do as a town, as a council, is, as Jo said, it's everybody's responsibility, is to ensure that everybody, no matter where they're from, the language, culture, age, that they have the confidence and the knowledge to be able to report abuse, potential abuse and abuse of adults. And we know that could be a barrier, that some cultures, some communities might find it as a barrier. And we've really got to use this to ensure that everybody is given the opportunity and knows where to report. I mean, the figures, I mean, you know, other councillors may want to come in on it. The figures are lower for Reading, but we are developing processes of reporting similar to children. So very much welcome the report and welcome whatever councillors' views on this and how we can go forward to ensure that we're building more safeguarding for adults in Reading. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. I have councillor Davis next.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, this is a really good report. It's great to see that this is getting all the attention from the council. It's absolutely a priority for us, as it should be. If we look on page 135, 136, you can see what we're talking about here. Some of the examples of abuse that we're trying to protect adults from. And I think adult safeguarding is sometimes about shining the light on this kind of abuse that's going on and can be hidden. And like, you know, gladly, in the last few years, some of these issues that might have been decades ago not spoken about, people wouldn't have come forward, are now recognised as being out there, things that people should not expect to have to endure. And we're all learning that we ought to be looking after our neighbours and raising safeguarding concerns. Now, if you move on to the graph on page 139, you can see there that, you know, it is therefore sort of welcome to see that the safeguarding concerns are actually going up year by year. And that perhaps demonstrates that people are more aware of and looking out for their neighbours and looking out for other people in the community. And that is to be welcomed. But obviously that takes work to deal with those safeguarding concerns, as it's explained in the paper here. And but it's important and obviously the resources are finite and therefore dealing with those safeguarding concerns and making sure that the ones that are appropriate to move on to safeguarding inquiries are correct and nothing slipping through the net takes resources. And the balance of resourcing from having a front door that is open and welcoming to people expressing concerns, but at the same time being able to deal with inquiries properly is what's important here. But, you know, I would say that it's important that we do not, there's no signal sent that we shouldn't, people shouldn't be raising concerns and there's no filter placed, the undue filter placed on converting those concerns to inquiries where it's appropriate. And if more resources are needed, I would suggest that the emphasis should be rather on filtering out concerns. Really emphasis is on adequately resourcing, dealing with those concerns, ensuring the inquiries are raised correctly when they should be, and then dealing with those inquiries and getting help to the adults that are suffering, have these safeguarding concerns raised about them. So it felt to me that for some authorities, there was a, seemed to be an emphasis in this report on, well, we're, you know, we're looking at, you know, it's a risk that we are getting increasing concerns. Well, I think it isn't necessarily a risk, could be, but actually probably to be welcomed. And the risk is more that we haven't, we've got adequately resourcing the, dealing with, converting concerns to inquiries and dealing with inquiries.
Thank you councillor Jo. I will ask Jo to comment in a minute when we've taken a few more. Councillor Dennis, I had you next and councillor Keane afterwards.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for that report again. And again, you know, some of what councillor Davis, sorry, thank you. Well councillor Davis is very valued as well. I've also got, I've got two points I want to raise. The first one is, hold on, let me keep... The first one is about safeguarding concerns and referrals from not just, not just the hospitals, not just the homes, but from the public. What are we doing to increase what safeguarding concerns are? For instance, some people may not realise things like, you know, bedsores are a safeguarding concern. They realise that in hospitals, they realise that in the care homes. But, you know, for carers out there who are looking after the elderly may not realise there's other forms of, we know of emotional abuse, but is that recognised? How are we putting the message out to the public of these things could be a safeguarding concern to help support the people that need that, the vulnerable people that need that awareness? And also looking at the figures for, you know, the wider, the wider agencies. Because we know that this is, you know, with West Berkshire, Wokenham and Reading, particularly around the black and Asian community referrals coming in, they're low. They're at 16%. And I recognise that this is across, you know, everything, the whole. But I wondered what the figures would be for Reading, broken down out of that. Because it would be useful for us to know what the referral, you know, what the concern rates are for safeguarding in those communities in Reading. And maybe we could look at, you know, how we could improve reaching those communities and educating those communities.
Thank you councillor Dennis and councillor Keane.
Yeah, thanks. I've just got a couple of comments to make really about how good I find the Safeguarding Adults team. A really robust team, very supportive. If you, I find that I use it quite a lot just to sort of, what do you think about this? Should this be a safeguarding or should this...? Actually, a very, very good, experienced, fantastic team. And I feel that there have been more resources gone into it. But and also there's the online portal as well, which has, I think that's only been a recent thing. But it makes it so much easier to report now, which colleagues have mentioned. And I wonder if that will actually help increase referrals as well. But it's actually much easier than the day when you had to fill out a form and actually the forms are really cumbersome, a little bit prohibitive to an extent. And actually, I just wanted to feed that back and, you know, brilliant team.
Thank you councillor Keane. Jo, do you want to respond?
Of course, yes. Very, very pleased to. Thank you very much for those comments, really helpful. So if I can take them in the reverse order, if that's okay. So in terms of that responsiveness, then we have introduced what we've called a professionals line, trying to be more responsive so that people can just ask a question really and mouth something over, not necessarily have to fill in a referral form. So that's great that we've had that feedback. And yes, we are trying to encourage when we do have referrals that they are through our online portal. But we do acknowledge that some organisations will not be able to do that. So for example, the ambulance service, you know, their blue light service, we can't expect them to fill in an online form every time. So and in a way, we've been a victim of our own success because we've enabled organisations to give us their version really of a referral. So that might be something from their system, for example, the hospital, they have their instant system that they record on. And then we've enabled them to just give us that rather than, you know, asking them to fill in the referral form. So I think there's a balance and we're working hard to achieve that balance to improve the quality of the referrals that we do receive. But also going to the first point about actually acknowledging that no referral is a poor referral. You know, somebody is worried about somebody and there's usually a really genuine reason for that. But for us, it's a very targeted response. So we are needing to sort of filter things and to triage and to screen things so that we are prioritising really. And that we're, you know, we're getting to those people who really need our services in terms of are they being abused or neglected? So I absolutely acknowledge that we do need to encourage referrals. And it's about helping our partners to understand exactly when, when are the local authority safeguarding responsibilities triggered? And that's one of the reasons why we've moved to what we've called our single point of contact. So we now filter everything through our contact centre. So this is the front door of the council with a view to, actually, it's not really something that a partner needs to work out. Is this a safeguarding issue in terms of is somebody being abused or neglected? Or is it something that is concerning because the person may have needs of care and support? So for example, somebody might be self-neglecting in the community. They may be, you know, possibly have dementia or something similar where they're at risk in the community. So we've moved to that front door. So that's really helping us because that's also helping our partners to not need to necessarily differentiate. And then in terms of that, that question around the public awareness, the Safeguarding Board has a key role in this and they've actually got a communication and engagement forum. And this is about actually encouraging the public and supporting the public to make the right decisions around safeguarding. And then to the last question around accessibility, I completely agree. We're not accessible to some of those perhaps seldom heard groups. But we're reliant on referrers actually sort of sending us referrals around people from black and minority ethnic communities possibly. So we're doing a piece of work currently around that community engagement and working closely with people like our domestic violence agencies. We're working with our integrated care partnership colleagues in terms of awareness for GPs when they're making referrals, et cetera. So we do acknowledge that's an area that we need to focus on and that's part of our delivery plan for this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Jo. Before we just move to the recommended actions though, I'd just like to make a few points on behalf of both councillors and the department that you've been working in, Jo. You've worked for Reading since August last year and you've brought a huge amount of professional expertise to it. You're passionate about your work. You've led an improvement programme for safeguarding, which has transferred the entry for safeguarding to the corporate call centre, you just referred to that. We used to call it the single front door in children's, but I guess it's called the same thing in adults and is... We used to call it the single front door in children's, but I guess it's called the same thing in adults and is a brilliant way forward. And this will improve the process for residents. You've established a new portfolio which focuses on quality improvement and practice excellence and championed key roles like the principal social worker and principal occupational therapist. You will be hugely missed by the department, particularly because of your collaborative coaching approachable style, style, sorry. So you're leaving us to go to work for the NHS. So it is their gain and our loss. And we wish you every best wish for the future. Can we now agree the recommended actions on the report? So it's action 2.1 and 2.2 in the report. Agreed? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You've left me a bit speechless, I'm afraid.
You may.
Thank you.
Thank you all for attending. And yes, we're all done. Thank you.